The Piscataway Township Planning Board Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways: Posted on the bulletin board of a municipal building and made available through the township clerk. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice set to the Star-Ledger. Notice available through the township librarian.
All right, I'm gonna do roll call. Mayor Waller is on his way. Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes, here, sorry.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
And the mayor's on his way. Mr. Barlow, we only have four right now.
We're gonna have to wait for the mayor then.
Mm-hmm. I emailed everybody else. Mr. Foster's on his way. He should be here any moment.
While we're waiting, Reverend Kenny, if I may, in terms of any changes to the agenda, if anyone is here for 21 PB 31, which is Eminem at Hose Lane Phase Two LLC, that's been postponed. Laura, does that have a new date yet?
Um, July 10th.
July 10th.
Brenda just emailed me that she'd been waiting for 15 minutes. I don't think she clicked on the right meeting, so excuse me, I'm gonna send her.
So if you're on for that, if you're here for that matter, it's been carried. There will be no further notice. It's on for July 10th. Just didn't want anybody waiting around if you're here for that.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Uh, now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, Reverend Kenny, I think Laura said to wait a second. She's trying to get, um, um, Chairwoman, into the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barlow.
And we're still waiting for Mayor Farm yet. Yeah. We got Mr. Foster. Mr. Ahmed is here?
Yep, he's just signing on now. Okay, so Mr. Foster, Mr. Ahmed is here. Okay, we can now all stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Kenny?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number seven, do we duly pay the bills? May I have a motion?
We, um, we have to swear in Mr. Ronerston, Mr. Reverend Kenny. Ron, you swear a testament you give before this board will be the whole truth. Nothing but truths, have you got?
I do. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Now we can pay the bills.
Tom, we also might have to swear on Jimmy Clark and...
Oh, okay, you're right. I just didn't see him on screen, so I figured, oh.
Sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. Clarkin, you swear the testimony you'll give before the board will be the whole truth.
I do.
Okay. Now we can pay the bills.
I see Madam Chair is here.
Hello, everybody. I've been watching you guys. I've been watching, but here I am now. Did you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, ma'am.
Right up to number seven.
Okay, thank you.
We're about to pay the bills, Madam Chair.
Can I have a motion to play the duly audited bills, please?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolutions to memorialize action taken on May 8th, 2024. Mr. Barlow?
Reverend Kenny, I make a motion, uh, for the adoption to memorialize, uh, action taken on May 8th.
Is that item 28, 23 PB 11 slash 12 V as in Victor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Um, Mr. Ken, Reverend Kenny, you wanna give us a motion for this next one? Adoption of resolution to memorialize, make a motion to...
Cashi Bioscience is 23 PB dash oh one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Dawn Corcoran, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Um, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes of May 8th, please?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that. Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number 10, discussion. To discuss whether the property designated is block 3702, Lot 2, shown on page 37 of the current Piscataway Township map, text map. Who's going to take charge of that discussion?
I am here, Chairwoman. Good evening, everyone, members of the board. I'll be presenting that study for you. I'm showing my screen now. I've actually taken the liberty of jumping to page five of the report where it kinda gets started on the study area description. So as you said, this is block 3702, Lot 2, better known as 2 Hancock. It's actually right on the corner of Normandy and Hancock. This is in the western, northwestern part of the township, near the borders of Borough of Middlesex and Borough of Down Brook. Um, it's actually located in your R10 residential zone. If you have my report, there is a map at the end where you can kinda see, uh, the aerials to kinda give you a locational setting. But what exists on the site today, it's a two-and-a-half-story residential home with driveway, two-car garage, fenced backyard, shed on the outside of the fence. You know, pretty standard residential home. Lot size about .3 acres and the home is 2,100 square feet. Um, it's actually operating as a two-family home, which is not permitted in that zone. Can actually confirm this, uh, both by township records, but also there's two meters on the side, there's two mailboxes, lots of cars in the driveway. It's pretty clear that there's two families living there, but, um, when we dug through the zoning records, it actually turns out in 2004, the zoning board approved an application for that home to continue operating as a two-family dwelling. I think it was discovered that it was, uh, you know, not approved by a variance and it was allowed to continue as a two-family. Um, as a, I'll go through the photos in a little bit, but the house itself is, uh, not in terrible condition. Little signs of dilapidation or unhealthy living conditions. Little bit of wear and tear, but nothing obvious that would deem it dilapidated or unsafe. But for context, this study area, this lot, is adjacent to 10 Normandy Drive, uh, which you may remember you recently, or, um, I, like a year and a half ago, I presented, uh, and yourselves and the town council decided to make it in need of redevelopment. So that lot was, uh, a vacant lot. It was the old Union Carbide Phenol Plant that stopped operating in 1987. Um, so this lot is right next to it. Um, in terms of environmental hazards, I actually surprisingly did not find any. Given the level of contamination at the old phenol plant, I thought there would be something, but actually nothing turned up. Uh, so it does not seem like there are any wetlands or any concerns there. Your surrounding land uses are a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential. The south and the east is more of a residential neighborhood. If you kinda move west towards River Road, you'll start to see more warehouses and industrial uses. Um, from a master plan perspective, as you all know, um, vacant developable land is diminishing in your township, so older sections of the township are more prime for redevelopment, and this fits right in there. This site was originally developed in 1914, um, and the residential neighborhood in that area was probably developed in the 50s and the 60s, so it's definitely an older part of the township that could benefit from redevelopment. Um, and as always, the state planning area classification is always the same for the township, so there's no concerns there. So I'm gonna jump to section five where we start getting into the photo, so you can kinda see the condition of the house. Uh, in this photo, you can see the two meters there, two garbage cans, well, this is not atypical, but, um, you can kinda see the fence and the shed on the side of the home. You can see the four cars in the gar, uh, in the driveway, the two-car garage. Um, and in here, you can see the two mailboxes, so this confirms that it is a two-family home. And, you know, when I did my analysis, typically, we're looking for something that meets some of the criteria for in need of redevelopment. But in this case, none was actually found. However, I'm still going to recommend it is in need of redevelopment because of a specific statute that's in the law. So this is starting on section six. It's something called necessary inclusion. It's not often used, but in some cases, it can be justified to include something as in need of redevelopment, even though no obvious signs of dilapidation or other things that meet those criteria are found. So I'm just gonna read it for the record. It's section four of the local redevelopment housing law. It says, "A redevelopment area may include lands, buildings, or improvements which themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, but the inclusion of which is found necessary, with or without change in their condition, for the effective redevelopment of the area of which they are a part." So I'm gonna go through a couple of things of why I think this is a necessary inclusion. And when I say necessary inclusion, I mean adding this lot to the redevelopment plan for 10 Normandy. So they actually came before your board for site plan approval, and they required a number of landscaping and adequate buffering, uh, both along Normandy Drive and Hancock Road. So we think the inclusion of this lot will actually enhance that buffering by creating more space, but also more depth, more physical space between the neighborhood, um, and that redevelopment project. So it's almost like a transition area from this new redevelopment project and the adjacent residences. So I think there will be a net benefit, uh, to include this lot for a more effective screening and buffering. Further, another benefit is specific to stormwater drainage. When they went before you were bored, I believe they had to, um, build a retaining wall, uh, in order to capture the stormwater drainage in an effective way. If we include this lot to Hancock, that retaining wall would no longer be needed because it would allow for more natural grading and percolation of rainfall into the ground. You know, it says you have more space to work with, there's more just natural drainage available, so that would be a net benefit of including this lot. Um, oh, sorry, skipped a page. And then, uh, a third benefit is they need a driveway to access the site from Normandy, and, um, 2 Hancock Road is actually like right next to it and may cause some site triangle issues, so the driveway had to be 10 feet. But if we include this, it would actually remove any nuisances from that, uh, close driveway to that lot. So, um, it makes sure that the project complies with applicable law, but really makes it safer for those trucks to enter and exit onto Normandy Drive, as they'll have better lines of sight in either direction for oncoming traffic. And then finally, there are actual benefits to the township if we add the slot, um, to make it more effective. Uh, that includes providing a 60-foot right-of-way for the remainder of Normandy Drive and a portion of Hancock Road along that intersection. It will remove the multifamily residential structure, the two-family that conflicts with your zoning in that district. So that will make, um, you know, the zone more in harmony with its intended types of uses. And the removal of the structural will return the tax lot to its intended density. So all those benefits and improvements, I think, will make for a more effective redevelopment, and it's necessary to include it in order to get those benefits. And I don't see any detriments in any way of including this lot in the redevelopment plan, uh, for the surrounding community. Um, and then, as, uh, typically, we include the smart planning criteria, which is the age criteria. This was applied to 10 and Normandy, and for very similar reasons, I think this, uh, criteria applies to 2 Hancock. In that you'll be able to use existing infrastructure and your proximity to Interstate 287, for such uses as was envisioned for the 10 Normandy redevelopment plan would be, uh, furthered. So with all that, I'm gonna conclude, um, that this study area 2 Hancock should be, uh, designated as an area in need of redevelopment based on the fact that it meets the criteria age, but also the language I just went over for the effective redevelopment of that area. So if it's found to be in need of redevelopment, it would be allowed to be included in the 10 Normandy Drive redevelopment plan, so that would be amended, uh, to include the acreage for both lots and therefore implement that more effective redevelopment. So that's really, uh, everything I wanted to testify on in terms of summarizing report, my report, so I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkin. Members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Clarkin regarding his report?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to note for the record that the mayor logged on, um, prior to Mr. Clarkin's, testimony with regards to it, so based on his attendance throughout, he would also be eligible to vote on this matter. Just wanted the record to reflect that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill, if I could, if I may ask, of Mr. Clarkin. So this, this site now is, um, not owned by the people who live in the home. Is, is that an accurate statement?
It's my understanding that it may be under contract to sell. I don't know if it's, I don't know if the owner lives there or just owns the home and is renting it, um, but whoever owns it, I believe, is under contract to sell. If...
I mean, the deed is a corp, is an LLC or something like that, out of Houston.
Oh, is it? So maybe it did go through. Um, I thought I saw something.
No, that sale's from 2018.
Oh, okay, got it.
Um, okay, so they're essentially renting out the house, then, I would have to assume. I mean, the sale was for a dollar in 2018, so I'm not really sure how that all works. Okay, that, that was my primary, my primary question. I'd, I'd have to guess that the members who live in this house somehow are aware of, uh, them needing to move out or will be given the appropriate amount of time to find other housing.
That I do not know. I was not notified by anyone in the township that they needed assistance, um, but that can be something we can follow up on to make sure they have enough time.
Obviously, if they're renting, I assume they have...
Excuse me, wait one person at a time, please.
I believe the sale went through.
Okay.
That was the mayor, uh, speaking.
And I was just saying, Councilwoman, if there's a lease as a tenant, they'd have to comply with the terms of the lease or, you know, make other financial arrangements, I assume.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you.
So then our understanding is that the, uh, it has been sold, uh, the property is, has, the soul has, the sale has been completed? A part of the mayor, right, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the members of the board? Thank you. Uh, at this point, we should open it up to the public for any questions that they may have. Uh, Ms. Buckley?
Mr. Clarkin, can you unshare your screen, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Much easier that way.
Members of the public, if, okay, go ahead. If you have any questions.
Uh, if anyone from public has questions or comments, you have to raise your hand, and then I can give you permission to speak about this application. No one, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Um, if there's no other questions of Mr. Clarkin, are we ready to make a motion? On whether this, uh, area is in need of redevelopment?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'd like to make a motion recommending that the property be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Is there a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I have, roll call, please?
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, there's a resolution that's also been prepared, and if the board so chooses, it would be appropriate to adopt the resolution at this time, identifying block 3702, Lot 2, as a condemnation, non-condemnation redevelopment area.
Could I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion, Councilwoman Cahill.
Can I get a second?
Second, Dawn Corcoran.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you. I guess that concludes that matter. Resolution's been done. Item number 10, discussion. Uh, to discuss whether the property designated as... Nope, we just did that, sorry. Number 11, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it sounded familiar.
Thought I messed up.
Then, addendum to the redevelopment plan for block 1701, 2.03, known as 4,100 New Brunswick Avenue.
Yes, I will also be handling that. Yes, thank you. Uh, this one's a bit more straightforward. Uh, I'm showing my screen, just...
Okay.
It's, it's kinda boring, it's all text, but I'll just kinda summarize. Um, so as you may recall, block 1701, Lot 2.03, it was requested of me to study that as an area in need of redevelopment back in 2002. That was done, um, it went before the planning board and the council. Uh, it was adopted as an area in need of redevelopment, and a redevelopment plan was prepared, later that year in November 2022. That was also adopted by both board and council. Um, however, since that time, no redevelopment has actually taken place on the subject property, and the existing tenant that occupies that property currently today is still in operation. And so, um, the issue at hand is if that existing operator needs to fix something or make a slight change to his operations, any, and it needs to come before this board, it's going to need a ton of variances because of the redevelopment plan in place. Because the way we did it is, we had it as a superseding. So that means the M5 manufacturing zone no longer applies, only the redevelopment plan does. So in order to not have that, because we wanna keep the intent of the redevelopment plan intact and not, uh, harm it in any way, the, this addent, through this addendum, we wanna change that to, instead of a superseding, make it a underlying zone. So this would change it to where the M5 is still intact as the underlying, and then the redevelopment plan is on top of that, um, as it can also apply to that site. So what that would do is, oh, sorry, I went too far. Is the current business operation called Transpackers Services Corporation. They can continue indefinitely as there's no timetable to implement the redevelopment plan. Um, and in the time it may take to find a redeveloper, as I said, if need changes or upkeep, they would be able to do it by applying under the M5 manufacturing zone, under which they, I believe, originally got their approvals under anyway. So this will remove the need for a large number of variances, that would just be an undue burden both to transpackers, but also wouldn't benefit the redevelopment plan we put together in the first place. Because, um, it says that deviations may be granted as long as it not, doesn't substantially impair the intent and purpose of the redevelopment plan, and if we didn't do that, I think it would, uh, unfortunately impair it. So I think this is a necessary change to have the M5 become underlying and still have the redevelopment plan applicable to the site. Um, and in summation, um, this would just allow the existing tenant to make improvements to his operations should it need, until a redeveloper can be found for the site. Yeah, that's just a quick summary of the addendum and why we're doing it, and its purpose, and happy to take any questions.
Members of the board, do you have any questions? Okay, since there's no questions from the board, Ms. Buckley, would you see if there's any questions from the public?
Thank you. Uh, no one, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Close to the public. Members of the board, what is your pleasure with reference to this report?
Madam Chair, um, Councilwoman Cahill, I'll make the motion, um, to, um, accept the block 1701 2.03, also known as 4,100 New Brunswick Avenue as an area, um, for the addendum. I guess this is the addendum to the redevelopment plan, Mr. Clarkin?
Correct. It's just an addendum to make that slight change.
Right, so I'll make the offer to accept the addendum.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And again, Madam Chair, um, based upon that, I prepared a resolution. It's the board's pleasure to adopt same.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion, Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you. Uh, second, please?
Second, Dawn Corcoran.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yeah.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair? And Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And our final discussion, oh, you're not on this next discussion, Mr. Um...
I'll wait around just to make sure.
We gotta hire him to do it first.
This one's on Mr. Barlow.
Okay, sorry. You may go then, Mr. Clarkin.
All right, have a good evening.
You're dismissed.
Good night.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number 12 is a discussion item to authorize Mr. Clarkin through foresight planning to amend the redevelopment plan for Block 9201, Lot 46.20, which is the Rivendell Meadows. There's a previous redevelopment plan from March 6, 2017. And it's been requested that we, um, that the planning board look into retaining Mr. Clarkin to amend the redevelopment plan.
Okay, that's the request? We need a second, or?
We need a motion to retain foresight.
Okay. Can I get a motion to retain foresight?
I'll make that motion, Dawn Corcoran.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Reverend Kenny.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And again, Madam Chair, I've prepared a resolution to memorialize that in the form of resolution if there's a motion to adopt the resolution to retain foresight.
Can I have a motion to adopt redevelopment plan to retain foresight?
Reverend Kenny, I make a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, for the redevelopment, redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Second, do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran? There she is. Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you. The motion for, for the resolution has been passed. Item number 13, 23 PB 23 slash 24, Vias and Victor Spark Car Wash LLC for preliminary and final site plan.
I believe Mr. Chang is here for that.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, board members, uh, board professionals. My name again is Jeffrey Chang, Law for Fox Rothschild out of Princeton Office. Uh, we've been continued since the May 8th hearing, uh, and this evening, uh, I have three witnesses, uh, like to testify, one being Matt Canali, uh, who is the operations manager, uh, just to answer a few more questions. We heard some comments from, I believe, the mayor and councilwoman about market data, so we just wanted to have him share briefly uh, some additional research that he did, because those were excellent questions. Uh, and then I would have Andrew Visio, the traffic engineer from Stonefield Engineering, and John McDonough, the professional planner, testify.
Okay, you make while you, okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, to note for the record, this is a continuation of a hearing that started on May 8th, 2024, um, and was continued, um, after Mr. Chang had presented several witnesses. I just also want to note for the record, there had been an obje, there is an objector to this matter, who was given an opportunity to appear at the May 8th meeting and did not. He had confirmed that he was going to be appearing today several times to several different people, I think Mr. Chang, myself, and Ms. Buckley. And we all received the letter about an hour and a half ago, indicating he was not going to appear and he was not going to, um, I guess, present any objections on the record at this evening. Um, and that was by letter from Mr. Liston dated June 12, 2024. With that having been said, Mr. Chang, you can certainly continue your application and call your next witness.
Sure. Uh, just briefly have Matt Canali, uh, who's the, uh, real estate manager, uh, at Spark Car Wash, uh, testify. Mr. Canali, you're still under oath. I, I don't know, Mr. Barlow, if you need to be sworn in?
And one other thing I wanted to mention, the, the seven board members that were here on May 8th and heard the application are all present again this evening. Mr. Foster, who's here, um, present, has listened, um, he watched the video and he has certified the transcript, so he can also, is eligible to vote, Mr. Chang.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, Mr. Canali, you understand you were sworn in at the last meeting, you understand you're still under oath before this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chang, you're a witness.
Sure. Mr. Canali, could you just, uh, briefly, um, share some of the additional research you did, uh, regarding, uh, I believe, his mayor and councilwoman's, uh, questions about market research distinguishing, uh, with the other car washes in the area and emphasizing the modern environmental friendly aspect of this use. Uh, I, I wanted to make sure the record is clear and to obvi, obviously honor the, uh, them with a, with a well-thought-out and researched answer, uh, in addition to what you presented last meeting.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, good evening, uh, members of the board. I really appreciate your time again, uh, tonight. I think, as part of, um, what Jeff alluded to, is just, um, starting off with maybe just reiterating a few points that we made the first time around and then, um, addressing, um, you know, specifically one of the other competitors in, in the market that I think, um, there was a couple of really good questions about and how, just from a business perspective, uh, we all, um, at Spark here are, are comfortable ultimately with the decision in this being a uh, profitable and successful longstanding business within the community. So, um, I'll start with just making kind of a high level, um, just reiteration that, um, you know, as, you know, being in the business we're in, you know, it's widely understood and backed by evidence that there's a true distinction between a modern express car wash and other car washes. That be it full serve or exterior only and so forth. That's evidenced by not only our own, um, workings within various markets, but also um, widely understood and accepted throughout the industry. Um, and also, uh, the largest full-service car wash in the country, it's a, it's a company called Autobelt. Um, they've alluded to the same, so they're, they're also testifying to the fact that, you know, there's, there's really two different customer bases and that's because of the product offering, it's because of the overall experience that each offering provides. So with that, I think, you know, the, the car wash in the market that I think is, is truly the only similar product offering is the one on Sealy, which there were a number of really good questions about previously. And it is, um, it is our, you know, my opinion specific to those questions, and I went back to look at some further data that I, in my opinion, and backed by, uh, some, some data that that wash may not be as strong as, um, you know, others would be in a better real estate location. And I think, um, being on Sealy off of Stelton and behind Walmart, you are relying in that location on the customers already traveling there to shop at Walmart or Lowe's, which is next door. Um, and if you go into that Walmart parking lot, unless you're coming from Stelton on Sealy, you're not going to see the cars at all. So, most of the, what the, what the data does is it backs up the fact that most of the customers that travel to that Walmart are coming from, uh, a different direction. They're coming from Centennial. Because that's where 287 ties into the exit, coming from the, the, the eastbound traffic and also ties into pretty dense populations, um, on the north and south side. So it's, it's really, in order to be front and center in front of that car wash, you would really need to take one specific route where there is really five routes that you, that, that customers take to ultimately enter that Walmart. So I think that, that data, which is, um, via a platform called Placer AI, Placer AI, what Placer AI does is it collects, um, cell phone data, that show how people, um, trade within markets for retail strength tracking purposes. So it's pretty live, updated data on a real-time basis, and that's, that, the data I was looking at is a, um, prevailing 12-month data, so it's, it's, it's very recent as well. I'll also just go in a little bit more depth on the market as a whole, um, and why we feel comfortable with, with what's being provided there. Um, an additional industry, widely accepted industry standard data, and also something that we personally, uh, Spark experience is that 20,000 people within a three-mile radius is a population base that we would feel comfortable, um, operating one of our car washes. Um, and that said, $20,000, excuse me, 20,000 people per express car wash. So in this market, there are, there, right now, there's only one true express car wash and the population base that you're working with in a three-mile radius of Piscataway is just under 100,000. It's 99,000 and change. So 99,000 and change based upon the, the, uh, the metrics that we use, not only us, but industry-wide, is more than enough for, for, um, to ultimately serve successfully the customer base that is there. Um, and on top of that, that's not accounting for the people that travel to town to shop, which, um, I, I got into a little bit more the first time. The, the Piscataway trade area marketplace draws from quite a wide area due to its proximity to 287, and it's a very convenient location from people as far west as Bridgewater, um, as far south as like North Brunswick area, which is a very dense population, and further north to, um, to, uh, the Marxist, um, to the north. So, for all these reasons, we, uh, have come to the conclusion and feel very, very confident in this conclusion, um, that another well-positioned, well-operated, modern express car wash with the, um, aesthetics and business operations that we all furthermore provide will be a, a very successful venture, uh, within the municipality and township for, for many, many years to come. So, hopefully, um, just that added information helps. Thank you very much.
I have nothing further from Mr. Canali. If there's any questions, I, I open up for...
Members of the board, uh, this witness has had his testimony. Does anyone on the board wish to ask him any questions?
Madam Chair, it's Councilwoman Cahill. Um, I, I just wanted to understand that I, I heard something about a mention of the entrance to the area off 287 was on the, uh, South Washington side. Was that where you were saying most of the traffic was coming from? I mean, versus, I, I apologize, I'm just trying to understand that whole entrance exit to 287 or off of 287, um, data. I, I guess I, I didn't quite understand that piece of it.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, what the, what the data says that most of the traffic is coming from, um, let me just make sure I'm getting the street names correct. Bear with me one second. Right, from South Washington and Centennial. So South Washington is the main thoroughfare that connects the population base to the north. Centennial is the main artery that connects the population base to, we'll call it the south and southeast, um, further into Piscataway. So it, what I'm trying to say is, in order to run directly, uh, past the cars that is there, you would have to turn down Sealy. There's only one route to see it. You'd have to go down Sealy because everybody else is coming through and from Centennial back onto, uh, South Washington and 287. So it...
So 280, 287, just so you're clear, comes bo, has exits both on the north and southbound sides on Stelton Road. And, um, the southbound entrance, actually, there's a massive sign there that everyone can see from 287 that links right onto Stelton Road where you would take a right and a right onto Sealy. So, and, I mean, I've never done this, this study, but I'm gonna venture to guess that the Stelton Road, um, entrance and exits, based upon my experience driving in town, are well more traveled than Exit 6, which is the South Washington entrance, um, into town. I'm not, that's not an expert and you can't, you know, that's not based on any data, that's just based upon traffic that I see. Because Centennial is the, the heavier traffic and Centennial is the, uh, would be like the retail, right? Uh, there's no retail on South Washington. Well, there is, there's the one shopping plaza is each across, but like along that, you don't pull into various stores. So Stelton Road, both southbound and, uh, you know, uh, entrance southbound and northbound are very heavily trafficked. And I'm not so sure how, uh, you know, a, a statement of you can't see the sign, it's pretty big car wash sign that you could see off 287. I'm not saying that the data is wrong or anything like that, but there are two entrances and there are one off of 287 that is immediately next to where the car wash is.
Yes, 100%.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to say that. I, I, I have no facts and no data, but I just wanted to state that, that there is that entrance there.
Yeah, no, you, you're 100% correct. I think that, I think the distinguishing factor is that, yes, absolutely, Stelton is very highly traveled, which is why we want to be there in front and center on Stelton. There's definitely a difference in our experience between a signage and the actual physical product operating business. There's a draw that the operating business and an energy that the operating business that has that, a sign just can't provide. But in order to, in order for that traffic to, um, go by the car wash itself, it would have to go down Sealy, and most of the traffic that's on Stelton going northbound is making a left on Centennial to get to the retail, um, not on Sealy. And the, also, the only traffic Sealy is getting is the southbound on Stelton from the other side of 287. Because there's...
Yeah, that's very true. You can make a left down to Sealy, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. So, um, so that, that's why Sealy is, is, it's just not highly traveling in order, you know, I think the business model maybe that they rely on is different. I think they do position themselves as a destination, which probably works well for them. We're, we're more of an impulse. I think 50, what, what our data says is that about 50% of our customers are impulse and about 50% are destination, right? So that's a whole half that we're relying on capturing as a result that we'll be well positioned within the market, which is why, you know, we wouldn't go for a, a location like that due to those factors, right? So being front, set and on Stelton, which we 100% agree is a very heavily trafficked road, makes a lot of sense for us. And I, I, I think this trade area is so strong that there's more than enough to provide for, for, uh, a couple of different very successful express, uh, car washes.
Right. And now, this is not a question, but more of a statement. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is where the P-Pac Gladstone Bank was or is still standing? Am I right or am I wrong?
It's a bank building, what the previous...
Oh, okay, but it's a bank building. So that bank building, you know, you cannot make a left off of Stelton to get into that location. And if someone were to pass you, uh, where you were on the left, there's no U-turn, right? There is a left onto Centennial, a left into a plaza, a back out onto Centennial and a right. You have only one side of Centennial, eh, eh, traffic, only one traffic a, a area going that way. You, you're not getting both sides because there is a median there.
Understood. And I, I, 100%, one of the biggest things that we kind of discussed as a team is exactly that. And really, the conclusion is that we're flanked by two very, very, uh, busy, anchored, uh, big box anchored shopping areas, one by Target, the other by ShopRite, the other by Walmart. There, it's just, there's, there's a lot of traffic going back and forth, shopping at each of these individual, uh, centers that we're okay 100% with the right end route, given the positioning within that corridor.
Any other questions? Any other members of the board have questions of this witness? Hearing no response, Ms. Buckley, uh, would you open it up to the public to, if they have any questions of this witness?
If you have any questions of this witness, you could just raise your hand and I'll give you permission to speak. No, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Uh, close to the public, uh, you may call your next witness.
Sure. My next witness, Madam Chair, is, uh, Andrew Visio, uh, professional engineer, PTOE out of Stonefield Engineering. If I could have him qualified and sworn in.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Visio, if you could state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Andrew Visio, V as in Victor, I S C H I O.
And your professional address, sir?
92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
You raise your right hand, you sort of test want to give before this board to be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
You're a witness, Mr. Chang.
All right. Mr. Visio, could you, uh, tell the board your education degrees held, uh, status of your, um, professional licensing, and if you've testified before, uh, other boards, uh, and perhaps even Piscataway in the past?
Absolutely. Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer, that's the national certification. Received my bachelor's and master's degrees in civil engineering from Georgia Tech. Have been practicing for approximately 13 years and have been accepted as an expert. Have been practicing for approximately thirteen years and have been accepted as an expert, uh, before multiple land use boards. Uh, throughout the state of New Jersey, uh, this would be my first time, um, in Piscataway.
Uh, Madam Chair, I ask if, uh, the board could be so kind as to accept Mr. Visio as an expert in traffic engineering?
He's accepted.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Visio, could you just mark, um, your traffic report that you submitted, uh? On behalf of Stonefield, just for the record, um, title of it, uh, when it was dated, uh, and last revised, so we have in the record?
Absolutely. Um, Stonefield Engineering submitted a traffic impact study dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, and also to assist with my testimony, I would like to refer back to Exhibit A three, which is a. Uh, site plan rendering exhibit. I'll be sharing my screen in just one moment.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Uh, and Mr. Visio, if you could, the narrative, uh, walk the board through the scope and extent of your traffic analysis, the impact. Of the proposed car wash with the drive-through, um, confirm, uh, its relation to future planned development projects. Uh, describe site ac- uh, site access, traffic circulation, um, queuing, drive aisles, uh, emergency access, uh, ingress, egress. Uh, and trip generation, uh, in the narrative, that would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Chang, would you mark your report? Where he's testifying from?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Does it need to be marked? Does it need to be?
No, this was, uh, A three from, uh, May eighth's hearing.
Okay.
This is previously been marked in the reports in the record and should be part of the documents provided to the board members, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
So please go ahead, Mr. Visio.
Thank you, Council. And just to confirm if I go any further, uh, everyone should be looking at the colorized site plan rendering. I've marked it as Exhibit A three in the top right. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, as I previously stated, Stonefield Engineering prepared a traffic impact study on behalf of. Uh, the application, the extent of that report, um, uh, is that it was conducted i- in accordance with. Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines. Um, essentially first we investigate the existing site and the surrounding roadway network. We then project the anticipated traffic that would be generated by the proposed site to conduct a roadway capacity analysis. And, uh, also very important is that we evaluate the site access and onsite circulation. Um, as for existing conditions, uh, as was just mentioned previously, the site is currently occupied. By a bank, a vacant bank with four drive-through lanes, accessed via one right-in, right-out driveway. Um, the site is located along southbound Stelton Road, which is a divided highway, um, as was previously discussed. Um, the site is located between Centennial Avenue to the north. And Hadley Center Drive to the south, both of which were included in the study network. Um, Stelton Road, uh, provides two travel lanes in each direction. Land uses are commercial in the site vicinity. Stelton Road is under Middlesex County jurisdiction, as my colleague Paul Much mentioned previously. Um, we do have, uh, uh, preliminary approval from the county regarding the site access. Um, roadway traffic volumes as part of our analysis. Were collected along Stelton Road at the closest intersections to the north and the south. During the times of the day when traffic is at a peak and could potentially be impacted, uh, by our site. So that's. That's existing conditions and our existing, uh, uh, analysis. Moving along to our future analysis, we turn to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to understand. The, uh, amount of traffic that may be generated by the proposed development. The manual allows us to perform these calculations, uh, by either the number of, uh, drive-through tunnels for a car wash or the square footage. Of the actual car wash tunnel. We performed both calculations and utilized the more conservative values. Um, our results indicate that during the, uh, busiest time period, which would be the Saturday midday peak hour. Uh, one vehicle would enter the site about every fifty seconds. Um, that totals seventy-four vehicles in an hour. Um, the next step we take. Is to superimpose that new traffic onto the adjacent roadway network. And conduct another capacity analysis and compare, uh, conditions with and without. Uh, the proposed, uh, car wash. Um, our findings indicate that the study intersections. To the north and south would, uh, operate generally consistent, uh, with the future no build condition without. These spark car wash. Um, and, uh, one request in the Dolan and Dean traffic review letter was to support. Our trip generation data with that of an existing spark car wash site, which we did. Um, we studied the existing location in Sicklerville in Camden County. And found that the, uh, Sicklerville location, which has been operating for a few years now. Had a higher trip generation than ITE would project for the Friday peak hour. Um, sixteen more entering vehicles than ITE projects. However, during the critical Saturday midday peak period, um, the Sicklerville location had. Fewer trips than the ITE projections, about twenty fewer entering vehicles. So, uh, our conclusion there is that, um. Because traffic volumes along Stelton Road are higher on a Saturday than a typical weekday. Um, given the, you know, dense, uh, commercial nature of the area. Um, uh, we feel confident that the submitted traffic study contains the most conservative. Analysis that we can conduct of the, of the driveway. When I say conservative, I mean. Uh, we used, uh, we analyzed, uh, the Saturday, uh, which is higher than a weekday. And we used ITE data for Saturday, which was higher than the, the existing count location. Um, so feel very comfortable with the results, uh, of our analysis in the submitted traffic impact study. Uh, moving, uh, our focus back on to the site design and site access. Um, referring again to the, uh, site plan that's being, uh, shared from my screen right now. The site would be accessed via a single right. A single right-in, right-out driveway along Stelton Road. Um, which you can see here. Uh, we don't just conduct a capacity analysis of, of the surrounding intersections. We also conduct the capacity analysis. Of how that driveway would operate in the future condition. Um, the findings indicate that. The driveway would operate, operate, um, at, uh, generally acceptable levels of service and delay. We're looking at approximately fifteen to twenty seconds for a vehicle to exit the site and enter Stelton Road. The queue is expected to be about one or two vehicles looking to leave the site during the busiest peak hours. Um, that's capacity of the site, of the, of the site driveway. The geometry of the site driveway is also appropriate for the site's design vehicle. Uh, which in this case are fire and trash trucks. Turning templates have been submitted, uh, within the site plan set. Uh, as far as onsite circulation, upon entering the site, vehicles would travel in a counterclockwise. Direction to three pay stations and a single car wash tunnel. Uh, I'll refresh everyone's memory. Um, as of now, uh, we are contemplating. Two of those pay stations to be pay per wash and one to be member only. Um, however, that is, uh, subject to change in the future as, uh, we, uh, develop our, our client base in the area. Um, twenty-seven total parking spaces are provided on the site. Six, uh, angled parking spaces to the top of the page shown here. Are intended for employee use only and, uh, the remaining twenty-one parking spaces. Would be fully equipped with, uh, vacuum, uh, and other accessories used by patrons to clean their vehicles. Um, the size of the parking spaces and the drive aisles is something I, I want to emphasize. They are significantly larger, both the parking spaces and the drive aisles. Than industry standards for a typical shopping center. Um. Your standard parking space in a shopping center is nine feet wide by eighteen feet deep. Uh, in this case, we are proposing thirteen foot, feet wide. Uh, uh, parking spaces and they would be nineteen feet deep. Uh, additionally, that center drive aisle where people pull in and out of the parking spaces. Uh, is not your typical twenty-four feet, it's thirty feet. All of this is to facilitate efficient maneuvering of patrons. Cleaning their vehicles while they may have doors open, trunks open, may not be parked perfectly so that. Uh, so that you are able to pull into an empty space next to someone who may be cleaning their, uh, cleaning their vehicle. Um, uh, the last, uh, topic that I want to, uh, touch on about the site design. Is the queue storage. We have, uh, queue storage for more than thirty vehicles. Uh, which is far more than, uh, is anticipated to be needed. Um. Uh, to elaborate on that point, um, it takes approximately two minutes for a vehicle to travel through the tunnel. Um, and the tunnel is long enough to process four to five vehicles at any one time. Again, the tunnel is one hundred and thirty-five feet long. Um, so conservatively, assuming only four vehicles can fit in the tunnel, again, two minutes. Uh, to travel through the tunnel, uh, the tunnel can process approximately one hundred and twenty vehicles. Per hour on the conservative side or one every thirty seconds. Referring back to our, uh, the, the peak demand that we're anticipating. Um, that is seventy-four vehicles. So. Looking at the, the, uh, capacity of one hundred and twenty vehicles per hour, the demand of seventy-four vehicles per hour. Um, and the ample queue storage available, um, we, we feel very confident that, uh. The site has been designed such that the, uh, any queuing that would take place at the pay stations would not impact, uh, the driveway. Uh, or the drive aisles. Um. So with that, I just would like to, you know, conclude that, um, the proposed development based on our traffic impact study would not have a significant impact. On the traffic operations of the adjacent roadway network. The design of the proposed driveway is sufficient both from a, an operations and capacity perspective. Um, uh, and, uh, geometric perspective. And the onsite circulation and, and queuing is, is more than adequate to accommodate the anticipated traffic patterns. Um, we are in receipt of, uh, a traffic review letter, um. Uh, dated, uh, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four from Dolan and Dean. Uh, I did my best to touch on all of the requests in that review letter. Uh, in my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and elaborate further, um, as necessary. Uh. Council, um, that concludes my direct.
I have nothing further for, on, on direct for Mr. Visio. I open him up to the board and board members.
Members of the board, um, does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Visio? Hearing no response from the board. Uh, Ms. Buckley, would you check the public to see if anyone in the public has any questions of Mr. Visio?
Mr. Visio, can you unshare your, um, A three? Thank you.
Please raise your hand if you have any questions for. No, no, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Um, do you have any, Mr. Chang, do you have any other witnesses?
Yes, my, my last witness, uh, Mr. John McDonough, who I'm sure the board knows well, um, he gets all the glory at the end. Uh, so with that being said, if I can have sworn in and confirmed as expert in planning, uh, I'd really appreciate it.
Mr. McDonough, if you could state your name, spell your last name for the record and give us your address, please.
Sure. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough and that's spelled M C capital D O N O U G H. My business address is here in Parsippany, New Jersey, one zero one Gibraltar Drive, Suite one A. And I am the project planner.
Raise your right hand, Mr. McDonough. You swear the testimony before this board to be the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Your witness, Mr. Chang.
Mr. McDonough, I know you've been there, uh, to this board before, however, please give your education, your degrees, confirm your license are still in good standing. And confirm that you've been, um, you testified before this board before.
Sure. My license in professional planning on the state level is current and in good standing. I testify on a nightly basis throughout the state. Including here many, many times. Um, I'm also certified on the national level, AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. Um, also current and in good standing. Uh, again, I testify in that capacity before land use boards and in courts as well.
Mr. McDonough is accepted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. McDonough, if you could in the narrative discuss, uh, your planning justifications, uh, the C two variances that we're asking this evening. Confirm that this use is permitted in the zone, confirm that you've been to the site. Um, you've reviewed the zoning ordinance, master plan, reexamination, master, uh, and overall master plan. Um, and then just to just also note which exhibits and reports and, uh, and applicant materials you're relying on for your planning, uh, expertise.
Sure. We've done a standard and comprehensive review of the application as filed. Uh, I'll call it a standard planning analysis whereby we review existing conditions, proposed conditions. We review. The zoning, particularly the GB General Business District regulations where. Uh, this is a permitted use and has been found to be a permitted use in other applications as well. Um, the applicant is seeking some relatively minor relief. Um, the heavier. Regulations in your zoning ordinance are all hit here by this applicant and the applicant has respected that. Um, the bulk criteria with respect to the building height, the building coverage, the floor area, the overall, um. Of massing controls, the lot area is nine times greater than the minimum zoning requirement. The lot frontage, the lot depth, the setbacks on all sides for both, uh, permitted principal uses and accessory uses as well. And as you just heard through Andrew's testimony, the parking complies as well. So. This application stacks up very well with the GB zoning criteria, both from a use and from a bulk massing standpoint. The applicant does need some relief related to signage and we'll tie that back into the benefits of the application as a whole. Uh, this use and this redevelopment of this particular piece of property does serve. Um, a beneficial public purpose and we'll tie the two together, uh, or the application as a whole under the pull-in case. Uh, whereby the board in considering the balancing test and the benefits substantially outweighing the detriments. Um, looking at the application holistically. Uh, the first thing we always do is take a look at how the development marries up with the site. So we're just gonna take you back. Uh, with some exhibits that I believe Jeff have already been entered to the board.
Sure.
Maybe not?
I don't think.
This is Brawl. I can't recall about this one.
The exhibits I have was, um, A one, which was a colorized rendering of the site for May of twenty-four. A two was an aerial exhibit of the current conditions. And A three was a site plan rendering. A four was an architectural rendering. A five was a floor plan and A six was a package of five colorized renderings of the original site and building. I don't think this was utilized, especially because it indicates it was taken by Mr. McDonough's office.
So A eight, if you could.
Um, so it would be A, what did I say? A seven.
Oh.
So A seven is an aerial photo from January of twenty-four?
A seven, Mr. Brawlow, is actually a four-slide exhibit. They're all aerial drone photographs that have been sitting here on the shelf, uh, from January. Um, what's nice about this, one, it makes us appreciate the warmer weather a little bit better, but two, more importantly. It shows that even with, uh, the leaves down, this is a site that has excellent buffering. Um, this woodland that you see in the back is actually part of the subject property and is to remain as part of the redevelopment of the site. And continues on to the lands that would be west of the site as well. Um, again. Constrained by wetlands and, and, uh, waters and, uh, other environmentally. Uh, constrained areas that would prohibit the development of those particular lands. So the nice thing about this application is that the applicant is working within the development footprint of what has already been disturbed. And as you see, I'll just try to zoom in a little bit here, um. With our frontage on Stelton Road in the foreground, we've got, again, what was last used as a bank. I agree with your councilwoman, this was originally or previously. The, the bran- branded as the Gladstone P-Pack Bank, that was about eight years ago that it closed up. Looking at some historic photos from the street level, looks like it was a subway, a sandwich shop at one point as well. So it's gone through multiple branding, multiple uses here as well. It is flanked by two auto-centric uses, including Pet Boys Auto Repair and then an auto-service use as well. I believe it's called Bridge Auto Service. And then, as you just heard, not only do we have the auto uses flanking the site, but we've got three major. Shopping centers that are also around this site. It is substantially a commercial area, if not entirely a commercial area defined by auto, auto service centers. And retail centers as well. And as I said, the lot behind the subject site, that's Lot five point oh six. Contains vast, deep woodlands that are constrained by wetlands. Your planner, Mr. Reinerstein, actually called out in his report that this site does technically have frontage on three streets. Stelton Road and then we've got two paper streets as well that wrap around the subject site. Walker Lane and in the back Howard Grand Boulevard are constrained by streams or wetlands, so. Unlikely that those paper streets would ever be converted to real streets. So technically, we're dealing from a physical standpoint with Stelton Road as our frontage road or access or ingress in and out. Just to take you through the rest of the slide packet here, all we did was spin the drone around, starting with a view to the west. Then looking to the north in frame number two under A seven, again, to give a sense of the heavily developed. Non-residential area that this will be a land use that certainly will, will complement. Not only from a physical and established land use planning standpoint, but also in terms of your zoning criteria. Frame number three spins us around looking to the east and it just reinforces what we've said in the prior frames. Woodland buffered area in the back, working within the confines of the development footprint that's already there. And heavily commercialized area along a main corridor that is lined by commercial uses. That this land use will certainly complement. And then finally, the last view takes us to a view looking to the south and just reinforcing what we've said all along. Working within the development portion in the front, preserving the undeveloped portion in the back. And stop share there. And then, now in terms of the development plan that's before you, you just saw this. With Andrew's testimony, but again, a very nice, balanced, well-organized layout here. With the tunnel type car wash. The queuing areas and of course, the central vacuum court as well, all integrating in a nice. Free flow of traffic through the site in and out and through the site as well. The building, one-story, four thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet. I know you heard a lot of testimony last time from Paul and from Matt and from Oliver about the building and the site and the operation, so I'll, I'll just hit the. Main points here. As you've heard, this is gonna be branded as a modern express new spark car wash. It is, again, one-story, four thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet. Modern, fully automated tunnel-type system, it's going to have a very attractive, neat, well-organized appearance. The grounds will consist of those twenty-six parking stalls that you just heard about. Twenty-one vacuum, the five employee with the credits, fully conforming with your ordinance requirements. The three-lane queue, which has ample capacity, and I believe that was reinforced by your own traffic expert in its report. That the queue capacity is ample and adequate here. You just heard Matt's testimony again, the importance of this is being a membership-driven land use with state-of-the-art equipment. You've got the water recycling here and the eco-friendly aspects as well in terms of the overall use. Again, this is in the GB General Business District, it's a zone that nests everything in your C-zone. With additional uses above and beyond that. And we know that permitted uses in the C-zone include business offices and personal service stores. Where you have found in other applications with this land use that this falls within the rubric of that land use category, so. In terms of zone conformance, again, the list is long, the use is permitted. And in terms of bulk, I just ran through all of them as well, how all of those heavier bulk controls are met. In terms of the relief, the applicant is asking the board to move on preliminary and final site plan approval. With some C-relief that predominantly relates to signage. And we'll jump off here and we'll just take a look at the applicant sign package. And you saw this in Oliver's presentation last time. We're looking for three signs on the building facade where one would be the maximum allowed. They're well-broken up. The overall area is slightly above what the ordinance allowance would be. There's been some movement in terms of elimination of a logo and a sign that would be on the south elevation or the Walker Lane elevation. So where we've landed is we've got the proposed east elevation, this would face up towards two eighty-seven. You've got the spark car wash wordmark and logo on the top facing Stelton. That is seventy-six square feet. Fits nicely within the, within the tower element. Likewise, to the north elevation, the long axis. Actually, this is the portion that faces up towards two eighty-seven, this will, will face towards the north. You've got the tower element with the spark, spark car wash and the logo at forty-four point three square feet. And then finally, over by the mat cleaner area, the Spark Park, as they call it, is only eight point eight square feet. So that adds up to approximately a hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Where based on your ten percent of the facade ordinance maximum, eighty-eight point nine would be the maximum that's allowed. So we're looking for relief for about forty square feet above what the ordinance would require. I think the visual speaks for itself, that this is going to provide nice hierarchy, give some purpose to those tower elements. A focal point, if you will, a demarcation and identification of the land use therein. And a very nice, simple, tasteful package without being overbranding or excessive or, or gaudy, but a nice. Overall clean look that will reinforce the branding. We're also looking at relief related to the ground sign area, which again, is relatively modest in the context of the ordinance. Fifty point one square feet is what the applicant is asking for. Thirty-two square feet would be the maximum that's allowed. Again, this is a sign that is approximately twelve feet across by about four feet high, so relatively modest in its. Overall dimension and that's what gets us to that fifty square feet.
John, can I just interrupt you for one second, just so my night notes? The freestanding sign thirty, can't exceed thirty-two feet and you're indicating it's what, fifty-one?
Fifty point one.
Fifty point one, okay, thank you.
John, these exhibits are A three, A four, correct?
That's correct, they've already been entered on the record, yes, thank, thank you for that, Jeff. I didn't have a, I didn't have a, a copy of the freestanding sign queued up here, but again, it's, it's a monument sign. It's about twelve feet across, four feet up and down. Not excessive in terms of its overall dimensions there. It incorporates the wordmark and the logo right next to it, so again, sort of reinforcing the brand, meeting customer expectations. Fifty point one is what the actual area equates to, thirty-two square feet would be the maximum allowed.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure my math was right.
Yep. The ground sign setback is at ten feet, where twenty-five feet would be the minimum required. Again, that falls into the design layout that we just saw in the site plan and how this incorporates with that entry location. It is not going to interrupt or intercept clear lines of sight. It integrates nicely into the overall site layout. And in that regard, we believe that the benefit of clear and safe site identification. Would outweigh any detriment associated with that sign setback. Lastly, the directional sign setback. One of the signs is going to be set at eight point three four. Feet, where ten feet would be the minimum required. Again, this is integration with the overall site design. Paul touched upon this in his testimony as well as to the rationale for that location. Not interrupting lines of sight and relatively de minimis deviation from the ordinance requirement. Lastly, the width of the landscape island, we have a pinch point in one of the islands that necks down to five. Point two-nine feet, where six feet would be the minimum required. That's short by not even a foot, so I would also couch that within the domain of de minimis. With all of that said, we take all of this relief. We run it through the balancing test and as I said, we look at the benefits of the application as a whole. I believe the benefits of the application as a whole were tied to at least four purposes of zoning. In the land use law and the sign package is necessary to effectuate the, the benefits that I'm about to recite. First, we see the advancement of purpose A, which is the promotion of the general welfare. Because this project will deliver permitted use, which explicitly means it serves the public good. It provides car cleaning services for improved visibility, safety, comfort and prolonged car life. Additionally, the advancement of purpose G. The project will promote the planning goal to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Because the site is located on a main roadway lined with compatible commercial and auto-service uses. Variety drives competition and in the end, in a capitalist society, it's the customer who wins. The best value, the best quality is what this state-of-the-art facility would offer here. Additionally, purpose I, the project will promote a desirable visual environment because it will eliminate an eyesore. A vacant abandoned building which has not served any functional purpose for eight years. And it will revitalize the site with active use and a fresh new image. A neat, clean, attractive building, well-organized site layout, landscaping. One of the niceties about this particular end user is the abundance of landscaping. That goes on the site and you saw that through Paul's testimony as well. And all of the other new site improvements that would go here. Lastly, we see the advancement of purpose M, which is our planning goal for efficient use of land. As I said several times now, working within the development footprint of what's already been disturbed. Takes underutilized land, puts it back to productive functional use, I think also goes towards that purpose of efficient land use. Counterbalancing that with the negative criteria and first public impacts. Based on all the testimony of very good witnesses ahead of me sworn under oath. The site will flow, function and operate safely, efficiently and comfortably. The project is compatible not only with the zone, but the other uses in the area. So it's safe to say, it's not going to alter the character of the area. As I said, the project is loaded with landscaping, it will certainly not have a negative visual effect. The traffic generation, as you just heard, will not be detrimental. The car wash is a modern, state-of-the-art, best-in-class, gold standard. Economic, eco-friendly use that fits well here and I think advances the goals of your master plan for, for that type of land use. The overall sign package here in terms of its impact is simple, it's tasteful. It's not overbearing, it's not gaudy or not excessive. Each one of those signs from the multiple vantage points do serve a purpose of identifying the site. And then lastly, in terms of the zone plan impact. This is not a substantial degree of departure from the zone plan, we're dealing with a permitted use here. That substantially aligns with the zoning ordinance, but for some relatively minor relief for the signs. In that regard, the project will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan for viable and stable commercial base. It will certainly reverse the ongoing stagnation, which is currently inconsistent with the zone plan intent. Relief relates to a distinct site with distinct attributes. And it's certainly not going to open the floodgates for similar approvals elsewhere in the community. And undermine the zoning in that regard. So in conclusion, I believe based on all the testimony, the applicant has met its burden under the law. The application is going to revitalize and modernize underutilized commercial land. It will give the site a fresh new look and that's not only going to improve the image of the site, but the overall area as well and the Stelton corridor. Most importantly, the statutory criteria for relief are met under the C-two balancing test. And with that, I'll close, that approval is warranted here. Jeff, that's all I have on direct.
Perfect, I have nothing further on direct, board members, for Mr. John McDonough. I open up for questions into the public.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness?
Madam Chair, it's Councilwoman Cahill. I think I have a combination of a question. For Mr. McDonough as well as I think internally here for the board, because I'm not exactly looking at the zoning ordinance. But this, Mr. McDonough, you're, you stated several times that this car wash is listed as a permitted use. Is it specifically listed in the general business zone as a permitted use? A car wash?
Though, the word car wash does not appear as a separate land use category, but certainly from a planning standpoint falls within. The umbrella of a service land use. Service land uses cater to persons or people and personal property as well, and that's exactly what, what cars are. We spend a lot of money on our cars and this is a personal service that relates to personals, personal property.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Cahill, I, I just, just so the record's clear. Ms. Corcoran, as the zoning officer, also deemed it as a, a permitted use and that's why the planning board. Got jurisdiction, which was confirmed by.
Is this the first time this has happened with this kind of application?
No, we've, we, we heard a car wash last year.
It was last year.
We've heard several car wash cases, it's always been.
Just down the road.
It's a permitted use, right, Mr. Reinerstein?
I'm sorry, I, there are a couple of people talking, I didn't hear what Mr. Reinerstein said.
Mr. Reinerstein said there was one just down the road.
It was in twenty twenty. Is that the one that's on Sealy?
On Stellon Road, Gabrielle.
It's on Stellon.
On Stellon Road.
So how.
On the other side is Stellon Road.
So yeah, Ms. Corcoran has the final call, how I highlighted it, there, there is a category called retail and personal services stores. Which I think it, it would be most closely resemble that. I used that in the prior review. Ms. Corcoran, I think, didn't, didn't raise any issues and I think that's really, it's a bigger umbrella and I think that's where it falls under.
I can, it's my opinion as well that a car wash is a permitted use in the GB zone.
Okay, thank you. The other maybe question I have is about the sign package. I, you know, I understand all of the, the points that you made and I probably wouldn't necessarily disagree. But I'm not gonna agree to the sign package as it stands because we have denied. These amounts of signs to like Aldi's, we, we only allowed them to. Some others, so. Three signs and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm missing something here in terms of the variance. Somebody was talking about six feet on one particular sign. The last re, the, the, on my, on my page here, and I probably didn't look at the updated paperwork and I apologize, Ms. Buckley. I had one here where there was a proposed directional sign at zero feet, was that adjusted to eight feet back or something?
Yes, I'm not seeing that as relief anymore, I'll, I'll yield if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that relief is still being sought.
Okay, so that one was taken out, all right, very good, okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the three signs, I mean, I, I mean, I clearly remember the Aldi application, they were, I think, granted to. Yeah, there might be some other things I disagree on the sign package, but I won't vote yes on the sign package as it stands, just as a heads up to the board.
And Councilwoman, if it, if it helps you at all. I'm just gonna flip this back up here. There are two, we're just two wordmark and logo signs, that's it, two. The third sign is this little. Identifier of where you would get your car mats cleaned, you put them in these machines and they'll, they'll clean your car mats, so that's sign number three right there. And that's only eight point eight square feet.
Mr. Reinerstein, where is that facing?
That is facing the north elevation, that's the long axis of the building that would be facing the vacuum court.
And the parking lot, right?
The parking lot, yes.
Okay, so I'm coming down Stelton, I, I, I'm not gonna really see that, if I turn into, I turn into the lot, I'll see. It's more ident, is that more identification for the, for the patrons?
Internal patrons, yes, in the vacuum court, I think it's a good point in that this, this will certainly be substantially obscured by vehicles in the court. This view, by the way, on the bottom is what you would see if you were driving down Stelton, if you were driving south down Stelton, I'll say. So you've got the identifier on, on the, on the tower element, but really, you're not going to see this, this is an internal sign, I call it.
So I'm, I'm heading south on Stelton, I see that spark car wash, I pull in there and I, and I see this. So I'm, I'm heading south on Stelton. I see that spark car wash. I pull in there and I, and I see the identifier sign.
Yes.
And the exhibit above it is, is facing Stelton, correct?
Correct.
So in essence, yes, you see it, but. It's not something I'm going to hit the brakes on and say, hey, I gotta hit, go to the car wash. We're really looking at that sign facing north.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, Councilwoman, does that, it got a little confusing for me also because I was trying to keep track of the changes. So it's, I guess, a better way of stating it would be, there are two facade signs identifying. The use of the property being a car wash. And what's, because it's on the facade, it's really more direct. It's, I mean, I gotta lean in to read it, the spark part.
Yeah.
That qualifies as the third facade sign. Correct?
Yes, and you might categorize it as more informational than advertising. It's not an, it's not an advertisement per se.
And just so I'm clear on the variances that are, that would are still required. You have that three facade signs, we'll call it for right now. You also have the facade signs at eighty nine point nine. And when you add the three of them together, it's one twenty nine point one, correct?
Correct.
And then there's a freestanding side not to exceed thirty two square feet. And it's fifty point one square feet. That shrunk since the original plans, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and then the sign being located within um, the setback. Which was ten feet, I believe. The applicant agreed to move that to the eight point three four at the last hearing, correct? Mr. Chang, you can jump in if if.
If, if I may, can I have Oliver Young, the architect who uh initially discussed the signage, just to confirm everything?
I just want to make sure the variances that you're seeking are the variances you're seeking.
If I could, Oliver, I believe you're a panelist, correct?
Yes, sorry about that. Just firing up the computer.
Oliver, could you just walk through again, just real clearly to the succinctly? The ver- the size variances are being requested, the size, location, so that we're all clear of what is being requested by the applicant.
And sir, you understand you're still under oath from the last hearing, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, John, are you currently sharing your screen right now? Would you mind changing to sheet R two point one? I think that gives a good view of. The, all the building signage here as well as the monument sign. Keep going. There we go. Thank.
I went too fast, right there.
Much better. So here you see a good view of the two building signs at the front of the building on the blue element, which John referred to as a tower. They're both the same exact size at seventy six square feet each. They're the spark logo with the words Spark Car Wash underneath them. And you can see that John is zoomed in. You can also see farther down in the vacuum area. The very small lettering for what we're defining as the third sign, which is the spark park at eight point eight square feet. Uh, so by our math, summarizing the two larger spark signs and the spark park sign, that's three signs totaling. One hundred and sixty point eight square feet. In regards to the monument sign, you can see that closer towards the curb cut. And I believe we clarified that earlier in testimony as fifty point one square feet total. So in regards to variances, the, on the building, the ordinance allows for one sign. At a maximum area of eighty eight point nine square feet, which is ten percent of the front facade area. And we are seeking three signs totaling one hundred and sixty point eight square feet. I did mention in prior testimony that our calculation is. A rectangle drawn around the spark car wash and the spark logo above it, which is centered over the words Spark Car Wash. What this does, oh, perfect, John, thank you for highlighting that. That encompasses a lot of dead space in each sign. And in fact, it's about twenty four square feet of dead space per logo sign. Which totals forty eight square feet of what we see as dead space. We subtract the forty eight square feet from the one hundred and sixty point eight square feet total. That gives us a smaller square footage calculation of one hundred and twelve point eight square feet. Which again is over the maximum allowed of eighty eight point nine square feet. For reference purposes.
And that's just a function of, it's not a, a rectangular pure sign, it's.
Correct. It's the way Spark wants to identify their signage with their logo. Let's say, for example, if we took that spark logo and moved it down beside the lettering. It would create a much smaller rectangle.
Understood. It's just the manner in which it's, the square footage becomes an odd, an odd measurement there. I, I got you.
Right, and we just wanted to clarify.
All right, here, here's, here's my thoughts on, this is Mayor Waller. You get one sign on the building, you have one at the entrance and that's it, period. Pick which one you want and that's what you're going to get. End of discussion. So you're either going to have the one coming out or the one on the side. And you have the directional one. You're only going to get two. You're going to get the directional and one on the building and that's it. End of discussion. Let's move on.
If there are no other, uh, I'll see if there's any comments. Uh, I'd ask for a five or 10 minute recess that we can talk about it internally. If that's okay with the board.
You're about to get a board and you guys are fighting us over the signs? Do you want us to vote no on the entire application?
No, uh, Mayor. I need to have the client make the decision. I.
To me, this is a no, this is a no brainer.
Absolutely, no, Mayor, we, we will, I'm, I'm confident we will agree. I just need the client to confirm that.
All right.
Jeff, it's fine. Let's, let's agree to it. Do we need to pick which one right now if we just agree to one sign?
Can we do it as a condition of approval with your staff, Mayor, or?
Can we do that? They'll pick the sign later, but they'll pick one sign.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I just want to confirm with the group which one we prefer. Inside is totally fine. Thank you very much.
Uh, and you're just referring, Mayor, to the two spark car wash. Are you also referring to that little?
They're gonna get the one on, 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 on the street right there, the freestanding, and then they get just one on the building.
Well, that, what about the little, um, the little yellow sign? Uh, just for purposes of the resolution.
Councilwoman, what do you want to do?
That little yellow one that said the mat washing. I didn't know.
It's like eight square feet.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine with that one because that's not a big logo sign.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then, I don't know, Jeff, if it's you or your, your architect, where is the monument directional sign that's going by Stelton Road? How far off the roadway is it? Does that still need variance relief? I thought we moved it, or is it?
I think it's ten feet off the property line. You're talking about the monument sign.
Yes.
That, and the plans it shows at ten feet. I think the question is the directional sign, has that been relocated? Because initially, and it is still shown on the site plan drawings as being on the property line. The members directional sign. I know it's in my report, it's also in Ron's report.
Oliver, are you able to answer that or do I need the um?
I'm waiting for confirmation from the civil. I ca- I cannot answer that. Sorry.
I mean, we have Paul as well if we need to add him, but he, he's a panelist that.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, um, Madam Chair, I have a question here. Um. The, the car wash we approved last year was fourteen oh seven Stelton Road. I, I, I think, John, you just can. That, that's an ex- that was an existing car wash.
Yeah, that was down closer to Stel- that was closer to School Street, but down from the uh, McDonald's.
That's been there since I went to college.
Yeah, but they did an upgrade last year.
They, yeah, they came in for.
Okay, uh, all right. That's not the same as the new.
No, that's not the same.
Coming in to our board versus the zoning under general business.
No, no, it is. It, it's, it's, it's the use. It, it's a car wash. It doesn't matter.
But the car wash was there before, Mr. Barlow.
But it's in the same.
That's a, that, I'm sorry, that is a, that's a. That's not a fair comparison because just before, I'm saying to myself, what car wash new? And it's not a new car wash, it's a new owner. There's a car wash there, I'm, I'm not even going to tell you how old I am. It's a car wash there since I was in college. And it just changed hands and they upgraded. It was not a new appli- new company. It was an existing thing. So I'm going to tell you right now, vote or no vote tonight, my vote tonight is a no for this application. Just telling the board upfront.
Oh, okay, but just so the record's clear, the, the board either has jurisdiction or is it, or it doesn't.
But to say, Mr. Barlow, and I understand, you know, there's, there's ways in which we do it and the terms and the regulations. But to say that this board approved a car wash as a blanket statement. Sounded like it was a new business. It's an existing car wash that had been there for years and years and years.
For decades.
I wasn't.
For decades. And, you know, we've, on zoning, they've grandfathered two family homes. When they had to, you know, find from years before we changed zoning, you know, in my book. That business, if they needed variances for whatever, I mean, in it. They would be grandfathered in because it wasn't existing use before. It was there before. It was a car wash. Wasn't anything else.
The jurisdiction will be the zoning board.
Right, unfortunately, we don't grandfather anything here in this guy.
Well.
Wouldn't, it, I'm just saying, from a jurisdictional standpoint, car washes come to the planning board, whether new, old or whatever.
Right.
We deal with car washes.
Okay, but our gen- right, but our general business, I mean, like zoning says, unless it's specifically permitted, it's prohibited, right? Under twenty whatever of the zoning. I get, I get it that it can be done, but what I don't understand is. How all of a sudden that shift happened? And I'm confused by this application being here, number one. Number two, for all the reasons I said at the last meeting, I haven't changed my point of view on. That the location of it as compared to the one right down the street that they came in before. New ownership, changed it up a little bit, we approved it here. And the one that's what, uh, not even a half a mile away. I, I, I'm just saying that in the scheme of things, as you're planning out uses in the town. The particular location doesn't even make, to me, good sense. But I know that I can be overruled and that's perfectly fine. Everyone has their vote. I just don't understand why this application would be. Approved as it is today based upon all the things that I said. But I'm not gonna, I just need to tell the board how I feel and rarely do I ever do that. But it's very confusing to me, the location of this particular business as compared to. The one that's further down on Stellton Road, which probably wouldn't be affected by this. And I really, you know, that's not the reason why we do this. Competition is the name of the game. I come from retail, I believe in that. But I just don't understand when there is quite a bit here, how that one in particular. Is, i- is of good use and, you know, I understand, um, I'm going to probably be outvoted here, but that's just the way I feel.
And Councilwoman Cah- Cah- I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cahill, it is, this is Dawn Corcoran. Uh, as Tom did indicate, I did put this application before the planning board. As you know, it's located in the general business zone. The general business zone, as Mr. McDonough said, makes reference to um, personal service uses and retail. And although car, car washes may not be listed specifically here, not every, not every particular use is. I mean, we have a self-service laundry, um, you know, dry cleaning. These are all personal items. Your car is a personal item. That is why I chose and made the decision to put this application before this board, because it's a personal service store.
Okay, understood.
Uh, just wanted to make that clear, so.
No, John, that's perfectly fine. I've, I, whoever put it forward, that's, that's not even my concern. It's, it's the location as compared to others. Um, and my feeling that I, I just don't see how it, it succeeds. I get the whole business perspective with the traffic and all that. Um, and that's, and I was misunderstanding when we said we approved a car wash. I'm like, I don't remember a new car wash. So, you know, there for me, I just needed it to be on the record that, yes, we did, it did come before us. However, that type of business had been, was there for years and years, so that's all.
Are we ready to ask any more questions of this witness? Members of the board, are you?
I just want to clarify. If someone can answer this question for me, Mr. Chang, what variances are left that you're seeking? That's all I want to know.
Yep. I got Paul Much, uh, the civil engineer from.
Can't you just tell?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, just to, just to clarify the, the setback for the, the uh, directional sign. Paul, could you just unmute yourself and confirm you are under oath and you're testifying?
Yeah, understood. Yeah, for the, we have a directional sign proposed along the northern property line. It's just a function of where the existing curve is and where the proposed curve is. There's not a lot of room between that curve and the property line. But we're, we're happy to move it further back or move the sign in, in its entirety to avoid that zero foot setback of that sign. If that's the, you know, if that's the preference of the board and their professionals.
Okay, can you move it so you don't need a variance?
What is the, off the top of my head, what is?
Ten feet.
Ten feet? I would rather go with five feet, but a- again, I'll leave it to the board. We can always move that sign out of that position, um, if we need to.
Is this the monument sign?
And what I'll do is I'll share exhibit.
It's a directional sign, okay.
Yeah, there's a very small directional sign that sits on the property line here. Um, you know, I think there's an opportunity, as you can see, there's, there's some stone and there's some area in between these parking spaces. And the parking spaces that that, that curb line could be shifted down. I'm not sure if we could do the full ten feet. But there's certainly five feet to be had in there to, to adjust that sign and or we'll, we'll end up moving the, moving the sign in its entirety to uh. If, if the board is, is not comfortable with it.
It looks like you have striping, um, obviously have the arrows and then that says members. I'm sorry, I can't quite read it. If you could zoom in, but you do have the striping on the pavement there as well, right?
Yeah, there's two, there's two lanes. There's one lane that dedicated to members, two lanes dedicated to um, your daily washers.
Mr. Much, couldn't you put that sign kind of where the curve is and there's that little shadow box right to the right of Ballard type three?
I think generally we can make it work with the ten feet. Um, you know, I don't think there's any reason to belabor the point. That's fine.
Okay. Get rid of that one, okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Are we ready to re-proceed with questioning now? Any other questions?
I have no other questions, Madam Chair.
Our members, any other members of the board have questions? Hearing no response, we'd like to open it to the public now. Miss.
Any questions or comments, you please raise your hand? No, Madam Chair.
Seeing no response, it's closed to the public. Uh, Mr. Chang, do you have any other comments before?
Yeah, no, not to belabor. I think we've demonstrated this is a, it, it, obviously in accordance with this being a permitted use. Uh, it's supporting the, the town's image of revitalizing this area. It's been a vacant bank for eight years. Uh, we're trying to make it a modern, eco-friendly uh, car wash that is supported by the retail centers. Uh, on Stellton Road and anchored by the multiple shopping centers in the area. Uh, we'd ask that this be approved this evening.
Thank you. Members of the board, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, this is Dawn Corcoran. Um, again, it is my opinion that a car wash is a permitted use in the JV zone. Um, the applicant has agreed to comply with all the board professionals' reports. The applicant has agreed to one facade sign. The applicant's agreed to eliminate the directional sign. Um, we've heard all the testimony. I know that the applicant's work. We've heard all the testimony. I know that the applicants worked with the staff. To make various improvements to the site throughout the process. For those reasons, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Do I, do I have a second?
A second.
Before we vote, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify. Your, their applicants agreeing to the engineering report with Joe Herrera about the conduit lines.
Correct.
And to the make ready, to make to the charging stations, correct?
Correct.
All right, that they're going to actually be operational before you.
Before a C O.
You see the C O.
They had agreed to that, yeah.
Correct.
Motion, the, a motion has been made and seconded. Would you call the role, please?
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
No.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And, and as a side note to this application. I just find it very interesting that there's going to be four car washes. Within a mile and a half, two miles of each other. I don't know how it's going to work economically, but we're going to find out, so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Fairly appreciate it.
All right, take care. Thank you.
All right, uh, our final item on the agenda tonight, number fourteen, is twenty one PB thirty one. M and M at Holes Lane, phase two.
Oh, it was postponed.
That was postponed, Madam Chair.
All right.
Evening is yours now.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
We are, we are adjourned, everyone. Have a good weekend.